Fast, and does it look like we have everybody?
Yeah, we have everyone. I think I haven't seen and maybe I haven't gotten through. The only one I didn't see was Stephanie Herring. We do have Quorum and she, maybe she'll join us, but we do have Quorum and then obviously Steve is gone. So if you're ready to start, I'm ready to go if Miranda is.
Ready to go.
All right, call the roll.
Planning Commission meeting is called to order on June 23rd, 2021 at 7:03 PM. Vice Chair Reese.
President.
Commissioner Blakemore. Here, Commissioner Cornell. Commissioner Cornell.
Roger.
We'll come back.
Let me see, I may have lost.
Okay, that's okay. We'll keep cruising. Commissioner Giblin? I did see him. Billy?
Here, do you hear me?
Barely. You're very, very faint, Billy.
Very faint.
All right, I'll work on that in my end, sorry.
I hear you now. Great. Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry?
Yep.
All right, and let's see, Trustee Taylor?
Here.
And then we will swoop back, Commissioner Cornell?
Cynthia, call that again. He's back on with us.
Okay, Commissioner Cornell?
Yes, I'm here.
Awesome. And then did we get Commissioner Herring? Possibly not. So she may join us at another time, but. Ready to go, Vice Chair?
Okay, so the first thing we want to do is approve the minutes. I looked over though, they were very complete, thank you Cynthia. It was a very long meeting last month, so there was a lot of minutes there. Is there anything that any of the commissioners have commented about or issue with that is incorrect? Okay, Cynthia, would you call the vote for approval of the minutes?
Do we have a motion in a second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so I got a second. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes. This is Karen.
I got it. Awesome. And we will run down the list alphabetically. We'll run down the list alphabetically, starting with Commissioner Blakemore.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Abstaining.
Are you abstaining? Okay. Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
And did we get Commissioner Herring yet, possibly? Nope. Commissioner Parry?
Yep.
Vice Chair Reese?
I was abstaining since I refused from part of that meeting.
Okay, and then Trustee Taylor, I don't think you were at the last meeting either.
Wasn't there.
I gotcha. Okay. So.
Were approved?
We are approved. Sorry about that. Motion passes.
Okay, bear with me, everybody. This is my first time in the big chair, so I'll do my best, but I will take correction. So moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item? Please get our attention some way now. Hearing none. I will ask anyone who is not speaking or about to speak to go ahead and mute themselves. And if one of the staff can help me with that, if they can't figure that out, we'd like to just keep the people who are presenting or speaking, the people that are showing up. And we'll move on to action items.
Hey Jim.
Yes.
This is Billy. Hey, real quick, I just wanted to thank everyone for, I guess a couple of weeks ago or so, for speaking up for me and I'm Steve Williams in our reappointment. So I just want to thank you guys for your emails and kind of.
No problem. We're glad both you and Steve were reappointed and we have the benefit of our experience going forward. Getting a little bit of echo feedback from somebody.
Yeah, that feedback is Cynthia, that was feedback from Cynthia Paulson having two active, whether you're on your computer and then on your phone, you're going to get feedbacks from both. And so I'm not sure if there's a way for you to join us on one device or another, but it looks like we lost one device. But Cynthia Paulson, the feedback is coming from you being on in two different devices.
Okay, well, if we could mute them, that would be great until they're ready to present or talk. And who is presenting the action item?
I am, Miranda.
Okay, so we're going to move forward then, hearing no public comment. Thank you for those comments, Billy. And as I said, we're happy to have some continuity continue with the Planning Commission. I'm really pleased with the group that we have and feels like that continuity will help us make progress going forward. So I'll let Miranda take it away for our first action item, our only action item.
Yes, thank you. So Jennifer, attorney Madson had prepared this aim, so I'm just going to give a brief overview and then she is obviously here to answer any questions that the commission has. But before you today, we have an application for a request of vacation at South Johnson Street. The property owners, which is Cynthia Paulson and Gerald Sutier, are submitting the applications for this vacation. They're requesting that town vacate South Johnson Street between West Spring Street and West Breed Street. The request to vacate a right-of-way is governed by the town's disposal of public land policy and Colorado law on the vacation of right-of-way. And that disposal of public land policy is in your pocket and I will go over that in more detail. So it is within their limits for municipality to vacate a public roadway. However, in order to do that, it is a legislative decision by the Board of Trustees. They would ultimately be the ones to approve an ordinance to vacate the real property. We're bringing this before the Planning Commission, however, because it is the desire of the Board of Trustees to have their way in. So what we'll be looking for from the Planning Commission tonight is to determine whether you want to recommend approval or not to request on their request to vacate South Johnson Street. Ultimately, the Planning Commission is not the decision maker, but your recommendation is going to weigh with the Board of Trustees. So in your pocket, you have that disposal of public land policy, which outlines how you'll review this application. But we put it in the aim as well. When evaluating the decision tonight, consideration should be given to the following. The value of the land, the current use of the land, any potential future use of the land, the public benefit of retaining the land, the public benefit in disposing of the land in the manner proposed, whether the proposed disposition is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, input from adjacent property owners, if it's a non-conforming lot that cannot be developed otherwise because of a unique circumstance to create a buildable lot. And the board will consider if the land could ever be used for a utility right-of-way or if it could be used as a trail corridor. We have not received any input from adjacent property owners. However, we gathered feedback from town staff. While there is no utility easement on this property, it is currently used for snow storage and there is a path that the public uses. So it's town opinion that we maintain this property and we do not vacate. Pro-SAB has also weighed in that they'd like to see that trails and public land be maintained and potentially upgraded in the future under the Trails Master Plan. And so they too feel it is in town's interest to not vacate. So that's town and advisory board perception. The remainder of this aim just gives you a summary of previous right-of-way cases, just so you can see what's happened historically. But that's kind of town staff presentation in a nutshell. I believe Gerald, who is their attorney, was going to present on their behalf, but I don't know if there's questions for town staff to begin with.
I think that was pretty succinct. Does any of the Planning Commission members have any questions for town staff on Miranda? Okay, I will let the attorney for the applicants go ahead and present their piece right now then.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Gerald Jorgensen, representing the proponents of this vacation. We have, Ms. Paulson is here to give us a little bit of her testimony with regard to the history of this piece of property, what's gone on there, and what instigated her interest in getting it vacated along with Mr. Sutier. And so if, I probably should step over and let Ms. Paulson speak first and then we can certainly address specific issues. Cynthia, if you could give us a feel or give us a history of your relationship to this piece of property and what caused you to look to get this vacated?
Okay, I am Cynthia Stinton-Paulson. My family, the Stinton family, has owned our property and cabin in Netherlands for 75 years. And throughout that time, our family has taken great pride in being good citizens of the community and taken great care to maintain our property for safety and, for example, for care of the trees. In the 70s and 80s, we had the pine beetle kill and we always take care of, you know, ridding our property of limbs and pine needles and so on to mitigate fire danger. And this piece of property that we're asking to have vacated is along our east property line. So it's at the northeast corner of our property. And that little piece of land adjacent to our property, we have also, throughout our time in Netherlands, cared for it and maintained it just like we did our own yard, including when we had killed pine trees from the beetle, beetle kill. We had, maybe, I think we had 15 trees in our yard and there were four trees in that little bit of the vacant area beside us that we asked the city if they were going to do something about those because we were all, as, you know, citizens of the area, told to cut those trees down and cut them up and cover them with tarps and try to make sure that the beetles wouldn't continue to attack other trees. So the town said, no, they didn't have anything to do with that land. And so my dad took care of the trees in that part of the property, too. And throughout all of the years, that piece of land has been used by some townspeople in ways that have been inappropriate, dumping trash, for example, dropping off old unwanted furniture and dropping off big piles of pine needles and tree limbs. So they treated it kind of as a dump. And so our, the three neighbors of that property have, you know, taken care of removing that trash. We also have had some problems with vagrant people coming along and camping in that area and leaving their human waste and their garbage. And again, we have dealt with that. And, you know, honestly, there isn't very much of what you said, like a pathway through there. It's got some giant boulders the size of cars in the middle that the city moved in there probably about 50, 40 or 50 years ago, so that people wouldn't be going through there with vehicles or really with anything. And, you know, there is occasionally someone walking through there, but I wouldn't say it's a clear pathway or really something that is very often, I don't very often see people out there. But I do ask that the city consider that this has been a little bit of property that although we haven't owned it, we have cared for it and maintained it and taken care of problems with it for many years. And we would just simply like to have the land vacated and turned over to, officially turned over to the adjacent property owners to care for and be responsible for.
Cynthia, the snow storage, can you describe how the city has been using that?
Well, they haven't actually. They've been, when they plow the snow, they plow it right up against everybody's property on the edge of the road. So they have had piles of snow in front of my property and also at the corner of my property, just at the edge of the road, not down, you know, further, further south than the piles of snow up against my fence. It's just kind of, it's just the, all along Spring Street. They plow the snow and get piles of it, just scoot it over to the side. And in fact, I just, I don't see much difference in the pileup of snow in front of the end of Johnson Street isn't any different than right in front of my driveway, so.
So this isn't a circumstance where they have a drive into the Johnson Street area and dump the snow?
No, they just plow the snow and they push it off to either side. So some of the snow is left on the, you know, in front of the properties on the north side of Spring Street and some along the south, like my property and the little, I don't know, little alleyway between my property and my neighbors to the east. So it's, it's not like a dumping place for snow. It's just part of the edge of Spring Street where the plow drops things.
Can you describe the size of the trees that are on this lot?
Well, they would be, many of them, 75, 100 feet tall. They are mostly lodgepole pine. The ponderosa pine were killed in the beetle kill and we don't have many of those. I don't, we didn't plant anymore and the ones that were in the alley, we took out. And there are aspen trees out there. The aspen trees are around 40 years old because they came up after the beetle kill. They just naturally started to grow then. The lodgepole pines, boy, I'm sure that they've, you know, they've been there much longer than that, you know, maybe fully the 75 years. Because when we bought our property in 1946, there were lots of trees on our property and in the adjacent land, so. And some of those trees, the other thing we've done is some of the trees, in addition to the beetle-killed trees, some of the trees, just every once in a while, one or two every year or so, just gets, I don't know, the forest there is too crowded and there's an issue with the trees all getting enough water and sunlight and the survival of the fittest. So there will be a tree now and then that just dies in that area. And my neighbors and I just take care of, you know, it falls and then take care of limbing it and hauling it away.
Cynthia, can you think of any public benefit to retaining the land for the city?
I don't really. I don't think the city has been using it or keeping it up for some kind of use. It's just been, just a vacant piece of land that, you know, I suppose some people might already think that we own it because you could see us out there raking pine needles. But it's a little, like, two lot length from north to south and that's 200 feet. And it's, I think it's 60 feet wide. So, and then the big boulders in the middle of it. It's just not really fit for, like, development or doing anything with. But it does, that piece of land does have some needs, you know, it needs to have the trees taken care of and, you know, the tree debris taken away so that there's not the fire danger.
So what would you consider to be the public benefit of the town disposing of the property?
Well, they would have another piece of their town that was privately owned and taken care of. Everything from maintenance to liability to, you know, upkeep and whatever. It's just, you know, it would be our responsibility officially. And the city and the town and the school district would have some tax revenue from it. And the ways that this little bit of land has been used inappropriately, like the, you know, the trespassing with the vagrant people and with dumping trash on it. You know, if we were able to acquire this land, we would fence it off at the ends and then people would not be dumping their trash or, you know, the homeless people, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't come in there. And they have, you know, we've had to talk to some people who were camping in there about, you know, there's a fire ban in the county and this is not, you know, this is not an appropriate place for you to camp and it's certainly not safe to be having a fire, an open fire. So I think the city has many responsibilities and for them to not really have anything that they needed to take care of with that little piece of land would probably be a benefit.
Right, thank you, Cynthia. I'd like to appoint the commission to the information that we acquired with regard to the value of the property. And that's at, well, there's three appraisals. The value of the, of the two parcels that would be on the side of the street with Ms. Paulson, those two parcels, I think the values came out at something like $2,600 for one and $2,680 for the other. So the value of the property isn't very great. And so there isn't really that much of a, I don't know, incentive for the town to sell it, I would say. And it isn't really shaped appropriately for municipal use because it's, you know, skinny, streetwide and then, and then long and skinny. I believe that the disposition is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. It's not an expansion. It's not a redevelopable area, really. I mean, as far as, it's not downtown area. It's not commercial. I don't see that there'd be a great tax benefit. And obviously, it hasn't ever been used for a utility right-of-way in 100 years. So it's pretty doubtful that that's a necessary corridor for utilities. And with that, I open it up to questioning.
Okay, thank you, Gerald, Mr. Jorgensen. And I appreciate the fact that the applicant, I want to thank you for stepping up over the years and volunteering to maintain that, being that it was in proximity to your property there. And I'm sure that everybody in the neighborhood appreciated that. Planning Commission members, what questions do you have for the applicant?
This is Karen Blakemore. I have one question for the applicant, for Cynthia. Do you live at the property, Cynthia, full-time?
No, my family, which includes myself, two siblings and four first cousins, own the property and we, we all have our own homes. So this we call our summer home. So we, you know, any one of us is there often on the weekends and during the summer. We have a, we have a family website, so we have a calendar and we just sign up for when we're going to be there. And I am there, for the most part, I am there to do any kind of maintenance work. So I'm the most full-time owner, but I'm not, I'm not full-time. I live in Fort Collins.
Okay, so it sounds like your extended family is on the property during the summer months, on the weekends, so.
And we aren't really a good cabin for very much winter use, but we do sometimes come up and stay, you know, a couple of days during ski season. And I go up during the winter at least once a month just to check everything.
And I'm wondering about the maintenance. It seems like the town should be maintaining town property. And so have you been in communication with the town to do any maintenance that you see is necessary on that property or signed it for that matter?
Yeah, we have asked them because, for example, the town or their subcontractors come through every few years to trim trees along the edge of our property, but that is on the, on the street, you know, across the fence in the edge of the street. And we have asked, when we've, you know, talked to the city and talked to those workers, like, hey, are you going to do anything about these trees over here on the little bit of Johnson Street? And they said, no, we don't, we don't need to do anything there because we're just taking care of any tree limbs that are coming near overhead utility lines. So even trees that were sick or overgrown or really leaning and getting ready to fall, no, that wasn't something that they were interested in doing, so.
I'm wondering if you're talking to the right people at town. Have you tried calling Town Hall?
I have talked to them. Real recently, I have not because this has been going on. My dad talked to them often. My dad died seven years ago. And prior to that, he was, he was at the, in Netherlands a lot more after he was retired. And he was in contact with lots of parts of the community when they built the new library and the senior center. And dad has talked to the, I don't know if it's the Planning Commission or the City Council or whatever, about this same issue about, hey, this land is not being maintained or used by the city. And how about if you allow the adjacent property owners to, you know, to acquire it? And he was told, no, we don't, we don't feel like doing that or something. So I'm not. So I, I'm not complaining because it just became status quo that we just, you know, we raked up pine needles and dead trees and whatever, just through the years. And I wasn't feeling like, I don't know, that's just all I've ever known. It's, it's never, I've never seen city workers in the area. And when we have asked about things, like I, I did ask if they were aware that they were plowing up to the fire hydrant so it didn't show. And they put a flag on that, they put a pin in the ground so that the, but we have, my, my neighbors and I have routinely gone and trimmed the tall, tall grass from around the fire hydrant. And in the winter, you know, moved the snow because the plow just goes through and just pushes the snow pretty much up against everybody's property line. And that fire hydrant is right there, just at the north end of the, the Johnson Street, so.
Well, we, we do have a new administrator in town in the last four years. And I, I have seen a sign along Meadow Boulder Creek, the tungsten path, I think it's called, that says, no camping. And so perhaps the town could put up a, a sign on that outlot saying, no camping. Because I, I heard you say that there were some people camping in there.
There have been.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much Karen. Any other commissioners have some questions for Ms. Paulson?
Yeah, this is Billy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Cool, so I do, so is it just you all, the stints who'd be buying this? Or would Gary be buying it as well, or Ty, and who all is buying this land?
Why are you asking me? I know that Jerry Soutier
Jerry, yeah.
Is a part of this request. Gerald, do you want to comment on that?
The Ties were originally, well, they, they want the vacation also. And I think they filed separate applications for that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
It's Miranda, I think it's important to know though, if the vacation was agreed upon by the Board of Trustees and ordinance was passed, it would benefit all adjacent property owners. Which would be
Right.
Paulson, Soutier and the
But who owns it? That's what I'm saying, when it's all said and done.
There's, if I may address that, there's a map in the packet that kind of shows with the appraisals that shows the survey. And it's at page 32 would be one of them.
Okay.
And if you, if you, if you look at that, Lot 1 is the Paulson lot and Lot 10 is the Soutier lot. And then the Ties have the Lot 5 and 6. And the, so parcel, parcel A would transfer to Lot 1, B to Lot 10. And then parcel C would go to, would attach to Lot 5 and 6. So it would be 30, it would be about 30 feet. It, it would, they could move their fences 30 feet towards the middle, would basically be how that would work.
And then it would all be fenced off, yeah, that, that parcel.
Yeah.
And this is, this is Jennifer Madsen. Just really quick, wanted to make a comment related to this page 32 and, and what would happen if the Board of Trustees approved the request to vacate? As Mr. Jorgensen said, the, the properties transfer to the adjacent property owners, and that's according to state statute on vacation of right of way. But what my recommendation would be for the Board of Trustees is that, that a condition of the vacation would be that the property would be subject to replating so that you don't have these small parcels that are not part of the adjacent lots, if that makes sense.
If I can, we discussed this quite a bit. I, I just want to make that clear. The, the intention isn't to use these parcels as separate lots. The intention is to, is to amend the plat so that the Lot 1 would just become 30 feet wider. I'll put it that way, if that explains it, yeah.
Yes, so that's, that's exactly what the, what the request would be, is that there would be, need to be replating, new plat that would show that parcel A then is part of Lot 1, parcel B part of Lot 10, and parcel C is, would be part of Lot 5 and 6.
Is this Miranda speaking?
No, this is Jennifer Madsen.
Oh, okay, thank you Jennifer, just clarifying.
Yeah, I, I guess two things. One is, I do know the town uses it for storage. It's, I happen a little block away. And, uh, there's always a big pile right there by the ponderosa pine tree there on, on Spring Street. I know that's been used, they, they don't just, you know, they do generally line a lot of the road when they plow it. But you know, that, that, that stretch of Spring Street gets almost no sun through the winter, as, as you all know. And, um, so it gets real icy and snowy and, and that tends to be a big pile that they do make use of there. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is actually true. And, um, yeah, I, yeah, I'm glad that Jennifer just said that, that really like replating this would be wise. I know I, I actually, we have similar condition here on this little dead end piece of Tilden, which is actually vacated, but one of the three property owners kind of plowed it one day many years ago. So it's, it's a gray, it's much more of a gray area than it ought to be. So I would definitely say if this goes through, you guys want to really, yeah, the replating sounds like good advice.
Yeah, I would point out that the, the density wouldn't change as far as the, you know, the number of lots or that sort of thing. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it really wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. It would just move the fence over and clean up the area.
I guess arguably the town could still pile snow there. Yes, no?
Yeah, I don't
I think so, yes. I, I think as, I don't remember who was talking when you said that you were in the neighborhood and you see the piles of snow. Yes, there is a pile of snow that's basically the corner of our property and along the end of Johnson Street. But that, that pile of snow isn't into the Johnson Street property. It's just along the edge of Spring Street, just like along the edge of my fence.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's a good point. That's a good point. This is trustee Givlin. Trustees, sorry, Commissioner Givlin.
Thank you, Commissioner Givlin. Any other commissioners, Linda, Roger, Chris?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Linda, and I have a question on the property that is vacated. So is it deeded to the property owners at that point, if it were to be? So who owns that property at that point?
It would, this is Jennifer Madsen. It would go to pursuant to state statute, which is the statute related to vacation of right of ways. It goes to the adjacent property owners. It's not deeded, but it, the, essentially the, the ordinance, the effect of the ordinance is that the adjacent owners would have title to that property.
So if that, one of the property owners would sell their property, would that be included in their, their property ownership? When, if they sold their, their property that they have at this point?
Yes. If, if the Board of Trustees approved the, the vacation, then yes, it would be those, it, it becomes part of their property.
Okay.
Herman Reese, I have a question as fast, this is Roger.
Go ahead.
Well, while, just a few minutes ago, they were talking about the applicant, applicants. And I mean, I just see the two, two applicants for the property on the west side. The, is it Ty? I mean, there, there's no application or request from the property owners on the east side, the Ty property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
But they will, they benefit just the way we've been talking all along.
Correct.
They get half the thing, half of it, okay.
This is, this is Marie Ty, I'd just like to join in. We decided that we did not want to continue at, at the time that we were. But we do not object to the application from the Paulsons or Gerald, Mr. Soutier. So, and yeah, I, I'm just, we're aware of what's going on, basically.
Chair, I have another question on that then. So would you follow through and, and go through with the replat of your property if the Board of Trustees approves this?
Yes, if that's what if the, if that's what the Board of Trustees recommends, we will follow through.
Very good.
This is Commissioner Givlin, can I offer another comment here?
Yeah, just given So we're just asking, hold on, we're just asking questions of the applicant right now. We still do have a portion where we're going to discuss this after we close the applicant and the public comment. Just wanted to remind you that, but please go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess the timing of this doesn't matter one way. Thanks Jim, appreciate that. Um, I would just say, yeah, given, given what I, little I know about this little spur of Tilden Street that was vacated years ago, but all three property owners adjacent weren't, weren't ultimately legally in agreement. And then someone just made a autonomous decision that kind of changed the whole reality of this road. I would definitely recommend that it's either all or none on this. Yeah, it, it just would be cleaner down the road.
Okay, and this is Jim Reese. It sounded like all three property owners were in agreement with trying to seek this vacation of the right way.
Absolutely.
Is there any, any other commissioners that have questions for the applicant before we open it up to public comment?
This is Karen Blakemore again. And I would like to discuss the appraisals. They, I'm looking at them and the property is appraised at $1 per square foot. Which I, I believe is too low. If we look at parcel A, 332 Spring Street, that's, and we look at the square footage of that lot, of the, of the Spring Street lot, not the parcel A. And the property valuation, the property valuation is $45,700. The square footage is 7,972. That comes up to $5.73 per square foot. For, for 337 West Reed Street, the property valuation is $61,700. The square footage is 14,541 square feet. So that would be $4.24 cents per square foot. So four and, four to six times more than the $1 per square foot that the appraisal came in as. Now, I understand that these are small pieces that are not intended to be developed. And also in the ordinance, there is a requirement for the town to retain any easements on the land for future use. However, all the properties in town are that way. They all have setbacks, they all have, but many have easements. Many cannot be developed because of geographic limitations, like example, the slope. So I'd like to understand why the appraisals are so low and so complicated.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine, if I may address Commissioner Blackmore. The, the difference between the, a lot being sold which has a development right or where you could build a house and an additional space that would be added to your lot is the difference that you're seeing. The, the appraiser was saying, hey, if we have Lot A with a house on it and we have Lot B with a house on it, and Lot B is bigger than Lot A, but they both have been developed, which is similar to how this would be once it would be vacated. What is the difference in value to the square footage that was added to Lot B? And so there's the, there's an intrinsic value to having the ability to build a house on the lot. But to gain extra, a bigger lot rather than a smaller lot, isn't really all that valuable.
Okay, I, I heard what you said there. Another question I have is about the applicant's willingness to pay all the costs associated with the land vacation, including applicable application fee and the other, I see in the applicant, in the letters, the statements for vacation, the applicants are requesting that the the cost of the property, of the parcel be decreased by the amount that they have spent for appraisal surveys and application fee. And that does not appear to be consistent with the resolution on the policy for disposing public lands. If you look at State, Statement 9, First Bullet. And so I'd like to understand more about why you, you are, well, I understand why you're requesting that, to decrease the cost. But did you consider that the, the resolution and the particular statement in the resolution which requires the applicant to pay all the costs associated with the land vacation sale, lease and applicable application fee?
I can, I can only state that there, that the applicant is very flexible on that. And so if that's, if, if that's a requirement, you know, that's fine. We would go with whatever the council would come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other final questions for the applicant regarding this vacation of right of Any other final questions for the applicant regarding this vacation of right of way before we open it up to public comment?
I have questions, but I'll have it after public comment. This is Chris.
Okay. Okay, is there any members of the public which would like to speak, uh, on behalf of either before, for or against, uh, this vacation of right of way on this item? Please, uh, raise your hand or unmute yourself and speak up and tell us your name and address. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public comment. Uh, I don't think we need to do the applicant's response since there was no public comment to respond to. And I'd like to close that portion of the hearing and move to discussion, uh, by the Planning Commission members of this item. Chris, you wanted to ask your question, now would be the time.
One other question to staff, is this something that everybody within three hundred feet should have gotten a card about?
It was, it just goes to the adjacent property owners. So the two applicants received notification as well as the ties.
Okay. And my second question, maybe it is Jamie Madison. If they increase their property by the size given in the vacation, does that increase their building envelope? On their property?
Are you asking if they wanted to then add on to their, their building and do an addition, Miranda? And, and do an, like, an addition to their building?
Right.
I mean, it would add to their lot, their lot size.
If you have a hundred by thirty-foot addition to your property, your building envelope on your property increases.
Right, like, their, their lot size would increase. And so therefore, if they wanted to expand, you know, assuming they can meet setbacks, yes, they could expand their, their building footprint, so their lot size expands.
Okay.
Is that your question?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's, uh, for you for, so, go ahead.
And the last thing would be if they got the property at a discounted rate and they sold their property later, they wouldn't be at a discounted rate that it would be going. So this is all questions I have of what they do with our vacated property. As we had an issue with, uh, vacated property over by Rusted Route in the past.
I don't know if, who are you looking?
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think one option, you know, that the Board of Trustees could consider in the Planning Commission could make a recommendation is to do easement, um, on that parcel. So as to limit development, having the trail easement and then doing easement along kind of the two sides of it, which would, it would limit, I think, what might be the concern you're speaking to.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Parry. Uh, I'll jump in here while other people are thinking of their questions. Uh, I will say I went and looked at the property today. It looks great. So if the town isn't doing any of the, uh, maintenance on it, then again, I want to thank, um, Ms. Paulson and the neighbors for, for maintaining that. Um, it does look like there's a pretty well-used path through there. And the feedback I got from some locals from the areas that, uh, high school kids cut through there, uh, on their way to the high school, uh, and that a lot of locals use that path. Um, I didn't see anywhere where, uh, people could camp without being seen. I wonder, uh, Miranda, are you aware of the last time there's been any complaints about dumping camping, uh, or, or trash, uh, any of that stuff, uh, that's come to Town Hall?
Yeah, no, we have not received any complaints. And I'm talking with, uh, Public Works and the Police Department about camping. They were not aware of any illegal camping or dumping occurring on that lot.
Okay, so it sounds like that's something that could be handled, uh, if there was problems like that in the future with a call to either the Police Department or Town Hall. Uh, and certainly, uh, this has been brought to our attention as an, as an issue in the past. I, I wonder what, uh, does the staff have any future plans, uh, for that, for that piece of, uh, right of way that you, that you know of right now, Miranda?
So what's been discussed is, uh, ProSAB is working on their Trails Master Plan update. And as a part of the survey, asking people about connectivity trails. And, and so there is a desire amongst the ProSAB team to maintain town spaces, whether that's pocket parks or connectivity trails. Uh, there is funding from Tunston Village that's meant to go to open space in parks. And so that's been an active discussion of how could we maximize resources to address some of these areas. Uh, now, there's nothing formally in writing or any sort of official plan. These are just kind of larger conversations. But that's why ProSAB has expressed a desire to keep this property because it is used as a trail. And they'd like to see, um, that, that there's more focus under the Trails Master Plan to enhance those areas.
Okay, is there, uh, availability, if there is issues such as maintenance that has to be done with the trees, uh, or there's, there's trash that gets dumped on there for, uh, Public Works staff to be able to, uh, handle that? Or is, is that something we would look at being done through volunteer efforts or, or something like that?
Yeah, I think that, you know, really that when it comes to kind of the maintenance of roadways, you know, town does not have to necessarily maintain them if they don't, if there's kind of no, no need to, because it's not an active roadway. And there could be directive given from the Board of Trustees for them to do so on this property. As you all know, Public Works is incredibly thinned out. So it'd be ideally looking at kind of under ProSAB's efforts, um, doing kind of the volunteer and as they've tackled other areas that are maybe the Public Works can't get to. We typically look to a volunteer group to help maintain. And that is also an interest of ProSAB is to figure out how to pull together a group that can address some of these town-owned properties that need a bit of that TLC. But I'm not sure that Public Works can formally take that on at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there other commissioners that would like to comment at this time?
Um, yeah, this is Commissioner Giblin. Um, what, I guess it's interesting to hear that ProSAB, you know, would like to see it maintained just as by the town for sake of trail access. And then you, you had mentioned, Miranda, something about a tr, uh, trail easement, if indeed it was vacated. Can you explain that more, that, that, that particular easement?
Yeah, so actually Attorney Madigan and I recently talked about it. So it might be best for her to provide a bit more information, so I'm going to turn this question over to her.
Okay, and real quick, based on another, you know, argument we're getting around about something totally different with an easement, how legally binding will this, with a, with a trail easement be on all three property owners into the future, you know, when there's new property owners?
So one thing that could be done, um, and this would be according to state statute, is the town can retain easements on this property. Um, a lot of times, right-of-way such as streets have utility easements. And, um, if the town were to vacate those right-of-ways, the town typically then retains the, that easement. In this case, um, there is a path that is being used on the property in the town as part of a condition of granting the vacation could require an easement over the property for use of a trail. Um, and potentially if Public Works said that there needed to be some other type of utility easement, we could also ask for that. Um, so a trail easement is definitely a, a possibility. And, um, that could go down the center of that property. It would be binding against all property owners, um, just like any easement would be. Um, and if there was a desire to have some type of buffer along the easement, along the trail easement, um, that could be part of, of that agreement as well. It would be like a buffer easement so that no, the, the property alongside the trail could not be used for, um, any structures.
And that would, and that would, that would be, that would be bound to future property owners as well?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Giblin. Uh, Commissioner Glasser, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Commissioner Cornell, did you have anything you wanted, any comment you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think I've heard pretty much everything. Really what I have is just be comments at this time. So, um, has it easements and, yeah, I, I, I just want to, I guess I should wait for the last round for doing my comments then, and just go to make a motion. So I'm, I'm good as far as any questions.
I, I think we're at the comment period now.
All right. Um, well, if we were to go forward with this, I actually, um, you know, it'd be hard with hearing that one, um, committee wants us to hold off on it. So it's hard to plunge ahead. Um, if we would, if the commission would want to, um, go forward with the vacation, um, there should be an easement. I would, I would suggest an eight-foot easement down the middle of the property and from the middle of the property line, a fifteen-foot setback. So that would be, you know, there would be a setback for any building from that center line, um, which would give them fifteen feet from their existing lines to build. They think that they ought to pay the, they have to decide what the full vacation, uh, price was. The, uh, you know, the property value. Right now, the Thai, Thai property, uh, nothing. So they should pay exactly what the other ones have. And I think it should be the full, um, assessed value of that property. If it's twenty-six hundred dollars, whatever that number was in twenty-six, then, you know, they shouldn't subtract for their surveys or any of their work because that's for applications, because that's, you know, a, a, any, any developer would have to do that. So they should pay the full, and, and we're only talking thousands of dollars. Yeah, the replat would be to the middle line and with, with those easements and setbacks they spoke of. And I, I would also recommend that if we would go forward, recommend that Public Works actually makes a report on the value of the property to the, to the BOT so that the BOT is real clear on staff's recommendations, especially Public Works. You know, are, are they using that for snow or not, that, that type of thing? So, you know, clarity from Public Works would be good for them to, uh, recommend to the Board of Trustees. Uh, those are the four things I've had.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'll throw in some of my comments now. Um, I basically, having heard from the staff that the town staff does not support, uh, vacating this right of way and that there is potential future use, uh, down the line for this, uh, I could not recommend, uh, this, this action. Um, and, and with the desire of the applicant to fence off both sides, uh, that would cut off a well-used path by locals, uh, to get through there. And, you know, if ProSAB is somebody who, you know, has, has some plans for that in the future or, uh, we can figure out a way to help maintain that through volunteer efforts. Uh, you know, as I was saying at the beginning, before we started the meeting, our church is very active in town. I'm sure we could dig up some volunteers to help with that stuff. But, uh, I personally am not inclined to approve, uh, vacation of this right of way and, and allowing this, uh, to become private property. Uh, is there any other commissioners that have comment at this time before we go, before I ask for a motion?
Uh, Vice Chair Reese, can I just, this is Jennifer Madsen. Can I just share a, a comment, um, only because this is something that doesn't come before the Planning Commission all that much, and I just wanted you to be aware of an option, in terms of, of information that Miranda Fisher has provided. One thing that you could do is the Planning Commission could refer this also to ProSAB, um, refer the application and request for vacation to ProSAB, um, specifically to get an opinion on this particular right-of-way and get ProSAB's feedback. Or for the Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you. Is that a recommendation that the staff, uh, is making, Miranda?
Yeah, so I, the ProSAB has not, you know, they've spoken about their desires on a grander scale, but they have not weighed in on this specific application. I do think that they would appreciate that ability to provide formal comment on this.
This is Chris, is a member of ProSAB as well. Uh, we have been discussing in our last meeting about pocket parks and where things would stand out, set in town, and also looking for areas that could be a dog park, not saying that this would be, but where the, we're working on the Trails Master Plan and this is a cutoff point in town that could be used. So moving it to the, to ProSAB would be agreed upon by me. But I don't know if this would be, if, can I vote on it twice? Question for Jennifer.
I, I'm sorry, what was the question?
If we refer this back to ProSAB and ProSAB looks at it, which I'm on the ProSAB board too, and I voted for something to go to, to the town board, what ProSAB says, if I'm backed on the Planning Commission, am I able to vote on it twice? Or do I just vote on it once and abstain the second time?
No, you, you can, you can provide comment and you can vote on it both times. This is a really, this is a legislative decision for the Board of Trustees. And in your, in your roles on the Planning Commission and ProSAB, you're really providing an advisory opinion on a, on a legislative matter.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is Karen Blackmore again. I, I would personally put the Planning Commission to take a vote on this. I'm looking again at the, um, resolution for disposal of public lands. And the second sentence says, "Public land should be disposed of only under very limited circumstances and then only if there is a substantial benefit to the public resulting from such disposition." Um, tax revenue and maintenance of, um, public property, I don't think qualify as a substantial benefit. Um, that could be stated for the sale of any town property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, any other commissioners have, uh, an opinion or a comment on that?
Uh, this is Roger Cornell. I, 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 I don't disagree with the thing you said, Karen. What I, I, and, and the comment I made was that if we were to go forward for that, but I guess I would only ask, um, what is the, uh, public benefit to leave it the way it is? Um, you know, it's just being there, it's been unattended, so what has been the public benefit? So I, you know, that's the question. So I, I, I think that's good discussion and I agree a hundred percent that we need, that's why I was going to suggest too, that we need to look at the page that was given in the abstract, um, you know, disposal of land and the conditions. But that's what I'm weighing in is what, what is the public benefit as the way it's been for the last fifty years, seventy years? I guess we make the motion and vote.
Commissioner Gibley, I, I mean, the benefit's been, it, it's used as a trail, I guess, by people that would otherwise, you know, have to choose a different route. There's a good little section of Old Town where if you're walking downtown, that would be your direct, you know, part of your direct route to get there.
That's correct, that if we would actually validate this easement, then, then it actually becomes a validated, uh, you know, trail. So both ways, it's win-win. So, yes, that's the town property now, but, you know, that, if we go forward and actually designate it as a easement, um, so I guess those are the pros and cons. Certainly wouldn't be taking away the.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would definitely go back to, I think we're, um, Commissioner Gibley, I, I agree with, um, I think Roger had said too, um, I apologize if I'm getting, who said what, but, um, that we should maybe, that we should talk to ProSab more and get their specific kind of weigh-in and, you know, feedback and kind of consideration of this particular spot for sake of trail access or any other plans they have and, and get some kind of, I think, I think, um, and then Roger did, and get some kind of report from town staff of, of, you know, specifically above and beyond a few things they listed, you know, what they envision for the long term. So I'd say some more information would be helpful to make a ultimate decision.
This is Trustee Taylor, uh, and I haven't been participating in these because I've been restricted from them for a while. I have a question for Jennifer, may I comment on this or is this restricted in some way?
No, uh, you're not restricted from commenting on this. Again, um, it's not a quasi judicial matter and so you may participate.
Thank you. Uh, I, I would like to, uh, stand with Karen Blakemore on this. Um, letting go of existing town property is, I think, a grave decision, not because we're counting how many dollars it costs per square foot, but because the town, especially of late, has been working to develop those lands that we haven't been developing in the past. We've been rather derelict in our duties and I understand that. And we have been counting perhaps unfairly on many of our citizens to kind of maintain those lands. But I believe that we are working very hard at making better use of our lands in a number of ways, uh, seeking grants to set up small parks and to make sure that trails are well-maintained. So I believe that our goal needs to be not considering what the land is worth now, but what the land may be worth in the future to the town and all of its citizens. So while it is true that right now we are perhaps not using this land properly, um, I believe that it is a really good idea to refer this to ProSab in order to find out what our long-term plans may be for this land and how that might benefit our citizens generally. Just a thought.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Do we have any other comments from, uh, Commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Glasser, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. Um, I just have a question on when we are voting on this, we're basically voting for, uh, we're recommending to the town board what our options are, we're giving them?
This is Je- this is Jennifer Madsen, yes. It's, you're sitting in an advisory capacity and saying, "As a Planning Commission, this is our advisory opinion, our recommendation."
So our vote basically is just going to the town and we're just giving our opinions?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Sounds like, uh, anyone else butt in here if, if I'm cutting off, but sounds like we've had a pretty good discussion on this and we could go a couple of ways. We could, uh, so we could make a motion and we could vote to either approve or, or deny, uh, making the recommendation to the BOT that we vacate this right of way. Uh, or we could, uh, make a motion to, if a motion's required, I'm not sure about that, uh, Jennifer, to send that for comment to the ProSab and take this up, uh, at a future time. Am I getting that correct?
You, you really have a lot of options. Um, you know, one of the options would be to, um, you can make a motion to either approve or to recommend approval, um, a motion to recommend denial. You could make a mo- motion to recommend denial and then also refer it to ProSab at the same time. Um, or you could ask to refer it to ProSab and then bring it back to you. Um, it doesn't need to come back to you if it goes to ProSab, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, thanks very much, that clarifies things. I think that the information. So let me finish here and then I'll let you go ahead. Uh, I, I think the information that, uh, Commissioner Blakemore, uh, showed, you know, on number two, where public land should only be disposed in very limited circumstances and then only if there's substantial benefit to the public resulting from such disposition is a pretty clear guidance, uh, that and the fact that it is publicly used. So I would, uh, accept any, uh, motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the application and also refer it to ProSab for their recommendation.
Okay.
I second.
Excellent. Would you call the vote? Thank you.
Sure. So we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. We have a second by Commissioner Parry. And we are gonna go backwards down the list, so, uh, down the alphabet, starting from the end of it. Um, with, uh.
Cynthia?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, let me intercede here. So just so I understand, because after that motion was made, this was a motion to, if we voted in approval of this, it would be to deny vacating the right-of-way and to refer it to ProSab, uh, for future study. Is that correct? So if we voted in affirmative, we would be voting to deny vacating the right-of-way and moving it to, uh, ProSab, is that correct?
Correct, the, the motion. The motion that was made was to recommend, uh, denial of the application and refer to ProSab. So, uh, when you are voting on this, um, if you vote in the affirmative, you are voting for the motion to deny and to make the recommendation to ProSab. Uh, Jennifer Madsen, did I cut you off?
No, no, and you didn't, but, um, I appreciate the clarification on the recommendation for denial.
Gotcha. Okay, so are we, are we ready to take the vote, everyone? Okay, so we are gonna go backwards from the top of the alphabet, starting with Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, yes, the motion to, to, uh, deny. Uh, Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes. Yes.
I think you're muted.
Did you guys?
He's, he's saying yes.
He's saying yes.
Oh, I don't know why I'm not hearing it, I apologize. Um, okay. Uh, Commissioner Parry?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Motion passes to deny the appro- uh, the, uh, to recommend, uh, denial of the application and to recommend to ProSab.
Thank you, Cynthia. I, I did wanna tell, um, Ms. Paulson again that if you do have some of the problems you've had in the past, I, I'm sorry that the, uh, town hasn't been as responsive as you'd like, but, uh, if you see people camping or dumping stuff on that, please call the town hall or to, uh, the, the police department and we'll hopefully be more responsive, uh, in the future. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Excuse me, I have a, just quick clarification question. Um, we're going to refer this to ProSab and, uh, when I, uh, voted, I was assuming that it is possible that ProSab could consider this, review the options that they had for this land and they may recommend, uh, they may recommend to the Board of Trustees that the land be vacated. Am I understanding correctly how far this might go in one direction or another?
Correct, and so is Miranda. Um, so they could, they could make that recommendation. And then the next step will be go to the Board of Trustees and as the board, they'll then review both the Planning Commission's recommendations and ProSab, even if they just.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to the agenda here. So now would be the time for staff reports.
All right, this is Miranda. So Karen put this together. Um, it's in your pocket, but I'm gonna touch on the highlights here. First, we just wanna really acknowledge and thank the volunteers we had, Public Works. Uh, we've done, who organized a wonderful town cleanup. Uh, we were able to serve one hundred and twenty-three Netherlands in Peak to be castled and forty-seven, seven percent of the disposed items were items that could be recycled or reused. And for those of you who know, this event is really meant for waste diversion. So incredibly successful and very appreciative. Uh, Vice Chair Reese showed up to help us and we're thankful for that and have a wonderful picture here. So great event, always is. Um, but this year, we were able to serve seven more households than we had done the previous year. Congressman Nogus recently visited Netherlands to discuss the emergency egress out of Big Springs. He has added this project as one of the town initiatives that he's requesting federal funding for. And we're continuing to work with his team, his legislative team, to get them the information that they need and are hopeful that this is selected and we can get the funds to be able to do that emergency egress. So great photo from that meet and greet. So 2022 budget, hard to believe it, but it's upon us, we're getting started. So in your pocket, you will see the schedule for that, including all of the public stress. One great thing is that we have a sales tax revenue increase of sixteen percent over this last year, which will help us to establish a CIP fund. Um, and that's something we'll talk to the Board of Trustees, but it puts us in a great financial position as we head into the next year. Roadmap to Recovery is an opportunity for us to work together with similar communities to address some of the economic resiliency pieces that came out of COVID. We were selected to team up with, uh, similar jurisdictions throughout the Peak-to-Peak area. Uh, don't have a ton of information, but more to come on how we will ideally team up together to help our, ensure, uh, really that we have a thriving economy as we move forward. It also has received American Rescue Plan Act funding. So Netherlands received a little over three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that will come to us in two payments. Um, we should receive that any day now because we filed our application. The plan is to put it before the Board of Trustees to begin to talk about best ways to spend those funds. They're actually very open in terms of guidelines where, you know, some previous COVID funding had very specific uses. This, you know, can be anything from assistance with residential utility bills to infrastructure. So lots of opportunities and the Board of Trustees will have to kind of weigh through what is their priority. So I look forward to that conversation. We're in the process of a leadership transition. Karen Garrityon is on a well-deserved vacation and sending beautiful photos from her road trip. Uh, so I am currently interim town administrator at this time and I'm working with our team to just get up to speed on share projects and things that maybe historically I haven't worked with them on, but so far, so good. You know, I think our goal was always that this was gonna be a seamless transition and, and I do feel confident in that. Um, but Karen will return in three weeks. She'll be back for three weeks. Then we'll take another vacation and then it'll be her remaining two weeks. So soak up all the time you have with Karen when you see her. Um, and then again, I'm working really closely with Rita to kind of move us forward on the financial pieces. I won't go through all the COVID updates, they're always outdated by the time we send news to you, but I think the greatest thing is just a high percentage of Boulder County residents who are receiving the vaccination. We're continuing to push that up here with the Peak-to-Peak, uh, Health and Human Services and, and just ensuring that people are getting access to the vaccine if it is their desire to get one. So more information in the pocket of COVID. On the healthcare front, there is a strong ask that the Planning Commission complete a survey about mountain community healthcare. Specifically, we're looking to assess whether there's a need or an interest to have a clinic up here. Uh, working closely with Clinica on that. So in your pocket, there is a link, the second link, takes you to the survey. It's about a minute or two to fill out and we would strongly encourage you to do so, especially if you're passionate about having healthcare services here in the mountains. And then the last thing is, yeah?
Uh, this is Jim Reese. I, I just would say, I did that this afternoon, it's super quick, and even though my insurance doesn't qualify for that, I still answered that in the affirmative, thinking of the community as a whole, uh, whether or not we could use mental health, services, dental, medical care here. Not everybody is able to travel, you know, down to, uh, you know, Lafayette or someplace else, uh, for care. So, uh, all the input that they can get, you know, maybe, maybe we'll be able to get, you know, some services up here. Thank you.
I agree and similarly, there's a comment section at the bottom. So even if your provider maybe wouldn't cover this service, it's kind of thinking bigger than, than that. And, and, but put it in the comment section, you know, this is maybe, if you're comfortable sharing what provider you have. It doesn't ask for that information, but if you were comfortable sharing, it would give Clinica a good idea of maybe who, what, who'd be insured by, by which provider. Um, so definitely, yeah, please fill that out, the, the feedback is really valuable to us. And the last thing, oh, yes.
Commissioner Parry, uh, can you send me that link? I looked, I didn't see it anywhere.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
My last piece here. It's Public Works staff report. I am by no means the expert, I like to include it though, just so you all know, all the different projects Public Works is working on. So I won't go through it in its entirety, but if there are questions about any of the projects, I would encourage you to reach out to Chris. Uh, but as you see, you know, we've got two full pages of all the different things they have going on. They're incredibly busy. They hired four new employees, three of which are temps, um, but that helped them to work through all the different pieces between the TIPS project, the Safer Main Street, the GoCo grant for Barker. You know, in addition to all of their regular duties, they've got quite a few grants that they're currently executing. That's a huge kudos to that team and all that they're doing. And that's the end of the report.
All right, thank you, Miranda, I appreciate that and appreciate all the hard work that the staff is doing. Uh, nice to hear that you're gonna have, uh, some transition between town managers, hasn't really been able to be accomplished in the past. Uh, so, and, and being that you're close with, uh, with Karen, I'm sure you, uh, can call her as, as things come up.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I, I also wanna comment. I I also wanna comment all the all the hard work that was done at Cleanup Day. Uh, you know, I jumped in and there was a lot of volunteer support, but man, uh, the amount of, uh, hard working Public Works employees and town staff that were there, uh, sweating out there in the sun and and, you know, some some residents in Netherlands definitely got the deal of the century. I saw somebody show up with a thirty-foot trailer that had, uh, what I would guess is about three or four hundred dollars with a trash on it if they'd had to go down to Waste Management. It took us about twenty minutes just to unload their trailer. So, uh, great things going on in the community, lots of good stuff from the staff. Uh, let's move on to other business, and I have one item to bring up. Does anybody else have something that they would like to talk about before I bring my issue up?
I just want to say thank you to Miranda and all of Public Works and everything for all their help. I appreciate it and appreciate them.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Other comments? Okay. The item I wanna bring up is for discussion is, uh, to talk about when we as a, as a board feel comfortable getting back to in-person meetings at the community center. Uh, I answered the survey and reached out to Miranda, and she said that there were some people that didn't yet, not, you know, through across all the boards that didn't quite feel like we were ready. And so, uh, I thought this would be a good time since we have a shorter meeting than we typically have had for a pretty long time, to discuss what concerns you have or whether or not, uh, we're all ready to return to in-person meeting. And I open it up to anybody who, uh, has, I'll 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 just say, me personally, uh, you know, I've been vaccinated and and I would feel very comfortable with the amount of space that we have and and the setup, uh, in the community room, uh, to return. And I'll open it up to anybody else who has comments.
This is Roger. Uh, I think we had a meet. Uh, yeah, community center's open. All the people out there doing recreation, um, pickleball and everything. Um, I think we can be careful, and if, uh, people even wants to wear a mask, well, we can wear a mask. But, uh, after trying to log on and do these meetings virtually, they can't wait to get together in one room and discuss things.
Okay. Thank you. Other folks?
Commissioner Parry here. I would like to see us have meetings ourselves, but maybe have, uh, the public be virtual or something like that, and just have our be appropriately spaced apart in masks if we need to be. I am also dealing with my son who has cancer, so I can't risk bringing anything home to him. But I'd like to have meetings in person. A hybrid meeting, maybe we would call it.
And and that would be with us in person but without the public there, uh, Commissioner Parry?
Right. Have the public come in virtually.
Okay.
But have, but have that whoever's like doing a land thing, they could be there. Let's just make sure there's enough space to clean everybody.
Okay. Other comments?
This is, uh, Linda, and I feel confident that we should have the meetings, uh, at the community center. And like I have to say what everyone else has said, if we're careful, if we wanna wear a mask, um, we should do that. The spacing is there, but possibly like what Chris said, have the public be virtual.
Okay. Trustee Taylor, you're welcome to weigh in if you have some comments on this. I don't know if you and the board have already started discussing this.
Uh, the board, uh, did have a brief discussion regarding this, and there are a few board members who are reluctant to return in person. And I know that, uh, Mayor Larson has been working with town staff on the possibility of acquiring equipment that may allow for a hybrid meeting. We're not in a position to do that yet, but, uh, I know that Miranda is is in on the discussions regarding that, and I suspect that the Board of Trustees is going to remain virtual until we have a a hybrid option, but that's all I know about it. I personally am, uh, perfectly happy to, uh, to start meeting in person. A little bit of caution combined with a vaccine should be entirely satisfactory for us, and I certainly understand, uh, Commissioner Parry's concern regarding the general public, because while Netherlands has been pretty good at, uh, getting people vaccinated, uh, the general area, uh, has not been as good. And so, I can understand that notion of keeping the the public virtual, but I think even for that, we would have to have the, um, special equipment to allow for a hybrid meeting. So those are all issues that that we'll have to address in order to accommodate, uh, those who are concerned about meeting, uh, in person. And I I know it's being worked on. I don't know about the status.
Okay. Thanks very much for that. Other comments?
Uh, this is Karen Blakemore. I'm ready to meet in person. I'm vaccinated. Um, I really like the idea of hybrid meetings because I think, um, uh, you know, more of the public may may participate if we have hybrid meetings. I've heard in the past, um, people say it's hard for them to get away with their children and come to the community center for a meeting. Um, so I'm, I'm strongly in favor of, uh, hybrid meetings, um, and I'm ready to meet in person.
Okay. Thanks very much. Commissioner Giblin?
Hey, um, thanks. I am definitely, um, in favor of the hybrid model. Um, I'm fully vaccinated. My wife is two, but we have a three-year-old and a seven-and-a-half-year-old who obviously are not vaccinated at all. And our nanny, um, our babysitter, her her husband's, um, recovering, recovered from cancer, and he's, you know, he's doing well. They both are vaccinated too, but, um, and he still has some risk to that. And, um, so he, I I like the hybrid model. I I do think ultimately, I prefer only, you know, I like, I like the flexibility of being able to do these from home i- in ways. Um, but but, uh, being there in person would be great. I would definitely be prefer that the public not be there in person, that they attend virtually, and it would just be, um, you know, the, uh, a socially distanced, and you know, if that's good, you know, mask optional, as long as we're socially distant, um, you know, uh, commissioners only, well, and staff, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it sounds like we have a consensus of people willing to return, but with a hybrid option. Uh, this was something that we wanted to get some feedback also for for Miranda to consider. Just out of curiosity, uh, Miranda, is the equipment cost prohibitive, or we just haven't had the time to start working on it yet?
Uh, time. So we actually have a CARES grant and about ten thousand dollars still to send, which Mayor Larson has asked that we put towards hybrid meetings. Now, we earned by no means the experts, and so we actually, Chair Reese, Vice Chair Reese had offered to assist, so we wanna try to pull in as many experts as we can to help us figure out how to make this work. And so between yourself, a member of ProSAB, and one of the Board of Trustees, um, while we'll have to publicly notice working together, if if that's important to me for us to figure out how to make this work. Um, because it costs is not an issue, it's just the how.
Okay. So so is it required that we actually have to have a group meeting, or can I just figure it out and come down and tell you what the options are?
Figure it out and tell me the option. That sounds great. The other person who's interested is, um, John Adler. You could work directly with him too, uh, without having to kind of notice it the second we pull in. Trustee, who's is my, but it would be a common issue.
Okay.
Public noticing. But yeah, I mean, if there is anyone who has recommendations or or Vice Chair Reese, if you know the solution, you know, Peter Kasek hasn't ever seen our room set up. He's our administrative assistant. He's gonna take the lead, but that is the challenge is he doesn't know what a normal board meeting would look like in the first place.
Right. Well, and there's also, after being off for, what, sixteen months, uh, some challenges that making sure we can even get the the room set back up correctly and the board and the mics and all that stuff. Okay. Well, it sounds like we can work towards that option. Um, and we've got a good discussion on this. Is there any other business, uh, that anyone would like to write?
So really, it's Miranda really quick. Um, John Adler actually sent me an email this evening. So Vice Chair Reese, what I'll do is I'll probably just respond and copy you on it, and then maybe if the two of you could work with Peter, um, you know, we'd love to do this sooner rather than later. ProSAB and SAB are both ready to come back in person. The feeling is Board of Trustees will be the last, but we'd like to kind of work out some of the kinks with advisory boards and commissions if they're open, to kind of working through this hybrid piece with us.
Okay. Sounds good. I'll, uh, jump on it as soon as I get the email.
So Miranda, uh, I'm not an expert in, uh, public address systems or this sort of thing, but I do produce audiobooks. I have some experience with, um, some of the electronic aspects of this, and if if I could be of any help, uh, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're building a team. Yeah, I mean, ProSAB plans to go in person, uh, at their next meeting, uh, with a hybrid component because one of their board members can't attend, so we wanna try to test it with them in about three weeks, see how it works.
Okay. So we have a deadline?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks very much. Do we have any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Ah. Good job, everybody.
Cynthia, would you take this?
I.
I.
Any against?
Wait, I wanna meet until eleven P M.
Oh, my gosh. Let's keep going.
What am I gonna do with all my spare time?
I bet this, I had bet Miranda this meeting was gonna end by eight twenty-four. She thought eight o'clock, so, uh, we're not doing too bad. Eight forty-four. This is a good quick meeting, guys.
Mine was thoughtful thinking.
All right, guys. Well, thank you.
Tell Chairman Williams that it went till ten fifty-five.
You guys are hilarious. Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-five P M. Have a great night, everyone.
You too. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Miranda, send me that link, please. Thank you.
Yep, will do. Thank you.
Have a good night. Glad you're back.
Me too. Bye.
Thank you.